Welcome to August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, which is our eighteenth voting session, regular session of the Mayor and City Council. Hagerstown, the meeting's now called the Order. First up, we'll have our invocation and Pastor Les McIntosh, better known as Pastor Mac. And I want to thank you because every time I ask you, you never fail, and I appreciate it. So if everybody can stand.
Bless your bones. With every head bowed, as we come to the Almighty God, with your hand of provision, protection, peace, and prosperity, we come boldly to the throne of grace. Acknowledging you as our source of strength and wisdom, we ask for access to your divine insight and foresight tonight, that decisions that are made will supersede thoughts, feelings, and opinions alone, but rather one that projects fact, freedom, and opportunity, leaving us to live our best life here in Hagerstown. God, let us leave here with the respect of these elected body officials. Allow us to leave here hearing the voices of the citizens assembled today. Let the expectations of hope reside greater than the notion of despair. And as we pray and reach to remain in this democracy for the people by the people leading us to live our best life. In your name we pray, for the wealth, health, prosperity, peace, and protection for the city, for the mayor, for the city council, for the city administrator, and all government, government and city employees, along with each citizen of the city of Hagerstown. In your name of your son Jesus, we pray as we look to live, to strive, to live in our best life. Amen and amen.
You remain standing for pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance. Thanks. See you. Okay. We have our announcements. Number one, rules of procedure effective December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in official record. Our meeting schedule for September, Tuesday, September second, twenty-twenty-five, and there is no meeting scheduled. Tuesday, September ninth, twenty-twenty-five, work session at four P M. Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, work session at four P M. Tuesday, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, is a work session at four P M. And Tuesday, September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, is regular session at seven P M. We have some appointments today. First one is the Hagerstown Housing Authority, Amanda Greg. Her term is to expire August thirtieth, twenty-thirty, which is a mayor's appointment. Next one up is the Hagerstown appointment to the Hagerstown Loan Review Authority. Can I get a motion? Oh, no, you got.
Mister Mayor, I hereby move to appoint Brian Selders and Michael Line to the Hagerstown Loan Review Authority with terms to expire on August first, twenty-twenty-eight.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
May I pose? Motion passes. Next one is the appointment of Hagerstown Youth Council members.
Mister Mayor, hereby move to make the following appointments to the Hagerstown Youth Council. Term, term expires, expire August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six. Zoe Burnett, Demara Laura, Jada Divine, Vanderhine. Terms to expire August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven. Bethany Ozzy. So sorry. Thank you. Tore Malat. Mariah Britton, Olivia.
Yamaja.
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 Okay. Ruby Zoa, Jocelyn Johnson, Jessica Ramos, Brielle Mercury Babu.
Okay. Want to hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. All right, I need, first up, I'll need Amanda Greg to come up. You're good right there. May I raise my hand?
I am Amanda Greg.
I am Amanda Greg.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Hagerstown.
And the charter and the ordinance of the city of Hagerstown.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Hagerstown Housing Authority.
Execute the office of the Hagerstown Housing Authority.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations. You got a chart book?
Just right here.
Yeah. How many of these you got?
I got them. I'm gonna get a little close, okay? One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Brian Selders and Michael Line from the Hagerstown Loan Review Authority. Neither one? Okay. Okay. We'll pass on that for right now. I'm not going to announce everybody's name, but everybody knows from the Hagerstown Youth Council that I had to point out. All right, everyone raise your right hand. Hi.
Dora Laura, Bethany Ozzy, Ruby Sal, Zoe Burnett, Jessica Ramos, Laura Britton, Jocelyn Johnson, Brielle Mercury Babu, Jada Divine, Tore Malat.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Hagerstown.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Hagerstown.
And that I will. Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality and prejudice.
Without partiality and prejudice.
Execute the office of Hagerstown Youth Council.
Execute the office of Hagerstown Youth Council.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Where's he at? I'm gonna go ahead and give you, while, while we're waiting on him, you can give your form a lot. Brielle. Bethany. Jessica. Olivia. Not here. Ruby. Mara. Zoe. Jada. Xander. Xander. You. Jocelyn. Dora. That's it.
Okay, let's go a little tighter. There we go, one, two, three. Good smiles, and one, two, three.
Each one of you has signed a book real quick. You can see all the names on there, just sound, just sound right beside your name. Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have some proclamations. First one is Forget Me Not Month, Disabled American Veterans, Chapter fourteen. Am I using my phone? Okay, Forget Me Not Month. September is proclaimed Forget Me Not Month to support the Disabled American Veterans Organization as they commemorate those fallen in war while promising the hope of renewal. And each year, the Disabled American Veterans Organization holds a Forget Me Not Drive to honor those that served during war for maintenance of freedom. The blue flower received after giving a donation is a symbol of love, hope, and remembrance for those who suffer or have been lost in war. And proceeds received during the Forget Me Not Drive offer a variety of free services to disabled veterans and their families. And the city of Hagerstown expresses our gratitude to those disabled veterans who valiantly fought to protect our freedom and preserve our way of life. Therefore, be it resolved with the support of the city council, I William McIntyre, Mayor of the city of Hagerstown, Maryland, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-five, twenty-five, as Forget Me Not Month and encourage our citizens to support the Forget Me Not Drive, which supports our local disabled veterans and their families.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yeah.
You got it. Is Eric coming in for that?
Yep.
There he goes.
Can I get a little bit closer? And one, two, three, and one, two, three.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Washington Goes Purple. Okay, the proclamation for Washington Goes Purple, National Recovery Month, twenty, September twenty-twenty-five. Our nation is suffering one of the most devastating epidemics in modern history. The state of Maryland, Hagerstown, and Washington County are not immune to this epidemic. And Recovery Month continues to educate others about substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders. The effectiveness, the effectiveness of treatment and recovery services and that recovery is possible. And Washington Goes Purple was a local movement to bring awareness to this overwhelming epidemic in our community and has resulted in a coalition of professionals and volunteers reaching out in the community to focus on spreading the awareness of the danger of misusing prescription pain medication and opioid drugs. And it is a moral responsibility of each and every one of us to help eradicate this disease and continue the fight until we have turned the tide of this epidemic that is eating away at the very fabric of our nation. Therefore, I William McIntyre, Mayor of the city of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim the month of September twenty-twenty-five as Washington Goes Purple, National Recovery Month, and encourage all citizens to light up purple, the color of recovery, and spread the information of dangers of opioids and other drugs in our community.
That's not like you, Alvin.
I know. Alvin never not says anything, and he's always. You already got one, so you can get somebody else.
Okay. And you got one, two, three, and one, two, three. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm so sorry. Can we take a picture so we can post it?
Absolutely. That's okay. You've got it. All right. Today is National Dog Day. And we have proclamation, special recognition. We have our fire marshal Dale Fishback and Ruby. And K nine officer Joseph Williamson. And Bethany's not here, but.
He's outside.
He's outside? Okay. Keeping everything safe outside? All right. Okay, National Dog Day is the celebration of all dogs, mixed breed and pure. Founded in two thousand and four, the day was created not only to honor dogs for their companionship, loyalty, and bravery, but also to raise awareness about the large number of dogs that need to be rescued every year. The day calls attention to dogs in shelters, the importance of adoption, and issues like puppy mills, breed-specific legislation, and animal cruelty. From service dogs and working dogs to family pets and strays, National Dog, Dog Day embraces them all. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. They are, they're good, stay up here, I need a picture real quick. You guys want to say? You want to say that? Okay, next up, we have Agenda Item Citizens Comments. Says comments on the agenda shall be limited to topics listed for consideration on this agenda. And please keep them listed, or limited to three minutes. Now, I have two, four, six, eight people signed up. For Locomotive two oh two, is every eight, all eight, raise your hand if you're for Locomotive two oh two. All eight? I'm sorry, that. Yeah, if you're, if, yeah, if you're, yes. All right, I'm not on the proposal, but if you're for keeping Locomotive two oh two here. All eight? Okay. And I want to try and save some time here. I want to limit to three speakers. Seven point two in our Roberts Rule of the Orders, if we have so many people signed up, and in order to save time, we would like just to have three people. So if you could pick, choose three out of your eight to come speak, we'd, we'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll have Lou Scally, Stan Cooper, and Elizabeth as well.
Okay. All right, Ms. Scally, you want to go first? Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Mayor McIntyre, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to this group tonight. My name is Lou Scally. Many of you may know me from radio or TV in the community. I've lived in Hagerstown since the summer of nineteen fifty-two. As a matter of fact, at the age of two months old, I came from Cumberland, Maryland. At that time, Cumberland was down on its luck after the war, and Fairchild and everything was booming in Hagerstown. So the Scally family moved to Hagerstown and enjoyed the good life here in the hub city. I'm in favor of keeping Locomotive two oh two in the city of Hagerstown. I too was one of those young children back in the nineteen fifties who had the opportunity to crawl upon that magnificent piece of machinery and still have vivid memories of that day. It's been over seventy years, but it still stays with me. And it's an experience that thousands of young people have experienced over these years. History and tradition are a big part of my life. I live on Oak Hill Avenue. I appreciate all of the great history of the city of Hagerstown. And I think Engine two oh two is very much in that part. We have an aviation museum, we have a rural heritage museum down south of town. We have automobiles, the Dagmar, and all of the great vehicles that were manufactured here. Engine two oh two, again, is a centerpiece of city park and the railroad history of the city of Hagerstown. I know that there are many pros and cons to keeping it or sending it to Cumberland. And again, I think it would be well-served in Cumberland to be there and operational. But also, I think it would be an incredible asset to the city of Hagerstown. I've been concerned about some of the things that have happened in recent years. We've gone forward, we have a new stadium, we have the fieldhouse, but we take steps back. We just lost Discovery Station. The city market, unfortunately, is a mirror shadow of what it used to be. And it is, we're seeing little things get chipped away. And I want to try to at least save some of this history. And Engine two oh two is there. Let me remind the council, for those of you, I think most of you are probably under fifty. Fifty years. I served on that board a couple of times and was part of the original Save the Maryland Theater group. We are here at that crossroad again. We are at the crossroads of history to make a difference. Do we give this locomotive away for a dollar to Cumberland? And I know they'll take good care of it. Are we going to keep it, and are we going to make something special out of it here in Hagerstown? I have a feeling that things are booming at City Park. The museum is doing a big project over at the old Hardell Building. Things are happening in the City Park area, and I know we can do great things here in the city of Hagerstown. With that being said, let me just wrap up my comments by saying Locomotive 202 does not belong to the council, nor the mayor, nor to Lou Scally. It belongs to all of the citizens of the city of Hagerstown. Therefore, in my humble opinion, my proposal to this council is to delay selling the locomotive to the city of Cumberland or to the museum up there, the locomotive group, and to put it on the next ballot as a referendum. Let the citizens of Hagerstown, let the children who were now 70 years old that had an opportunity to enjoy, let them make the decision. I think that that would give total transparency to this, because there obviously is a lot of conversation that this is already a done deal. I need to remind the council that this is not an old truck that we're selling from the Parks Department that has 300,000 miles. This is a piece of history of the city of Hagerstown, and I highly and respectfully request you to put it on a referendum. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dan, do you have an alarm that they can... There's usually an alarm at the end of three minutes. That way they know.
Yeah.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Good evening.
Do me one favor, because I don't remember which one is speaking. Can you just state your name?
Yeah. My name is Sam Cuthbert. I've lived around here since 1988. I taught English for five years at St. James and for 26 years at St. Maria Guretti. Let me begin my brief remarks by saying that I have no personal animosity to the City Council or to the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad. No matter what happens here tonight, we'll all leave here with our own opinions, our own visions of what has happened, and life will go on. That being said, no one here has the right to give Locomotive 202 to the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad, or to anyone else for that matter. In 1953, the engine was given to the children of Hagerstown by the Western Maryland Railroad. It belongs to the children of Hagerstown, and we, the responsible adults of each generation, take care of it for them. The giving of the engine in 1953, the bestowing of the engine on the children of Hagerstown is historical fact. It happened. The City Council and the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad can no more change historical fact than move Antietam Battlefield and all its monuments up to Cumberland or Frostburg. We honor not only Locomotive 202, but also what the Western Maryland Railroad did by giving the engine to the children back in 1953. Locomotive 202 belongs to some unknown child at some unknown point in the future who will look at that engine and touch one of its wheels and have a life-changing historical experience that will connect him or her to the past and change his or her spirit forever. The Western Maryland Scenic Railroad has enough engines. This one belongs to the children of Hagerstown. It's theirs as long as there is a Hagerstown. Thank you, and God bless.
Okay. Next one, last one on this topic. Emily Conrad.
Good evening. I'm here in my free time tonight, 38 weeks pregnant, speaking publicly for the first time at public comments during my 12-year career here. I've lost sleep over this decision that is before you tonight about Locomotive 202. If I stayed silent and this historic piece of Hagerstown was removed from City Park, I've decided I couldn't live with myself, so that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here for my kids, so they can experience the 70-year treasure like I did, like my parents did, and like my grandparents did, along with tens of thousands of Hagerstown citizens. My views are my own tonight, not necessarily those of my employer, but they are factual. For 10 years, I worked for Parks and Recreation under the retired city engineer Rodney Tissue. During that time, an outside consultant was brought in and spurred initiatives that transformed the area around Locomotive 202, the crown jewel of City Park Railroad heritage since 1953. Here's a list of developments at that site as a result of that initiative started about a decade ago. The site was rebranded as City Park Train Hub with a new logo featuring the locomotive. A 125-person pavilion, the largest in the park system, was added there. An engine-themed playground was installed, a refreshed museum exhibit was updated, and new public bathrooms were added. Not a small investment. And the interpretive signs were also updated, telling the locomotive's story. On March 28, 2023, Rodney's last day at council, this council voted for its much-needed cosmetic restoration, which was the final piece of that plan. If you sell 202 to another community for $1, that does not even cover the cost of removing the signage that celebrates its history here, let alone the loss to heritage tourism, which is just as vital as sports tourism. It's cheaper to keep it. In my view, this deal you're voting on tonight does not benefit Hagerstown's children, many of whom come from families living below the state's poverty average. A free trip to City Park where kids can climb aboard, ring the bell, and connect with Hagerstown history is priceless. It's been on the National Register of Historic Places since 1984, longer than I've been alive, and Locomotive 202 offers an interactive experience that no other place provides but Hagerstown. If it's sold, it's gone forever, leaving behind a void and a ghost in our past, present, and future. I understand that city resources are limited, but nonprofits and community support can help, just like with the Sailor House at Kiwanis Park, which was restored beautifully by a nonprofit. So why not apply that model to this other historic piece? When it comes to confidence, I trust Karen Dunswaffer, president of the organization leading the 202 Save It effort. I've known her for over 20 years, and I know that she has the character and capability to do this. Her passion and historic preservation experience, including an award from the city of Hagerstown for restoring the historic property Ravenswood in 2017, make her the right person to put your confidence in for keeping Hagerstown with 202 here. For my son, due to be born in two weeks, and my daughter, aged three, and for all those who were born and raised in, born or raised in the city of Hagerstown since 1953, this locomotive is for the children. It is a tangible piece of our cultural inheritance, and it's our birthright. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Okay. Was all these 202 keeping? All this listed here? Okay. I will also go ahead and, since this is the agenda item as well, we received numerous comments regarding Engine 202. This is pro 202, and I want to read the names that came in via email. Brian Karen, John Long, Frank Cronawetter, Sharon Nally, Sam Cuthbert, Richard Zimmerman, Chandler Fishback, Ron Keplinger, Tammy Sue Brewer, Maya Blickenstaff, Taj Smith, Joseph Klein, Pamela Shaw, Joseph Shelton, Ken Buckler, Theresa Knode, Kenny Wright, Joseph Klein, Stacy Michael, and Hunter Crutchley. And also, there was a total of 106 signed postcards received to date. All right. Is there anything else? That's it on the... Anybody else that wished, that not on Locomotive 202, that has any comments on any agenda items this evening, you can step up to the podium? Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll go to our motions. First up is the approval of minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of minutes presented for the mayor and council meeting held on July 8, 2025, July 15, 2025, July 22, 2025.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I realize the consent agenda is really small. The fence panels, what is the primary purpose for the fence panel?
The plan was to separate the alley away from the property that it posts. Except the one that the post office...
Yeah, yeah. So I feel like I might not have been here for that discussion. It just, for me, it looks like we're putting a fence next to a fence.
No, it's a fence that, it's a more sturdy type of fence to keep the lawyers.
But are we removing the fence that's...
That fence will be removed.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Just replace it?
It's replacing that fence.
Yeah, this picture doesn't make it look like that. They're just imposing it over what's there. Okay. Jim, you got anything to add? Are you good? It's not creating two fences, we're replacing them.
No, it is creating two fences. The chain link fence that is there is on post office property.
Correct.
And it's going to remain for security purposes for their yard. The proposed wall panels will actually be on the edge of the alley, right in front of that chain link fence, and they're going to act as a screen so that you're not seeing directly into the post office yard. The panels are supposed to help block that.
Okay.
Is it going to extend down? Like, is it going to finish?
It's going to, the fence panels themselves are aluminum rectangles. They're going to have perforations or cutouts, or there should be a design in the packet showing what they're going to look like. The bottom of those fence panels will be six inches above the surface of the alley, and they'll extend up to six feet above grade. So it's not going to be quite as high as the chain link fence the whole way, but it's going to act as a screen for most of what you can see through into the yard there.
All right. Any other discussion? Want Jim standing there? Anybody else have a question? All in favor?
Aye.
If that is...
No.
Sorry. Did you say?
I said no.
So, okay.
And I said no.
No? Okay. Motion does not pass. So we're just going to revisit that one? Everything else is good? Just going to revisit that one? Or not revisit?
Is that the one, Pete, is that the one you're voting no on?
Yes.
Is this one in particular?
Yes.
That's correct.
Because we can move it, right? Can we move that item?
We could move this item out from the consent agenda. If this is the one you're, that, the ones you have a problem with, we can remove out so that the ones you don't have a problem with, because some of these are bills to pay.
So you want to redo it?
Yeah, if this is the one, we can move it out and bring it, bring it back.
Well, I'll ask right now, is there anything else on the consent agenda that you would like to get removed? Please speak up now.
Okay, so this one. So the consent agenda is approved, except for this one.
Here.
Yeah. At the bottom, I hereby move...
Okay.
With the exception of, that's what...
Whoever made that motion needs to make that motion again.
Yes.
And amend it to remove that item.
That's correct.
I made the motion.
All right, so at the very bottom.
Yep, they will.
Right here at the bottom.
Okay. Okay. I hereby move that the consent agenda, with the exception of Weller's Alley Decorative Fence, be approved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. No.
Motion does not pass. Okay. Next up, approval of a resolution, approval of a parking agreement with the Maryland State Department of Assessments and Taxation.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and council to approve a resolution to enter into a parking agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the state of Maryland for the rental of 10 parking spaces in the central lot west for use by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. The term of the parking lease is two years, commencing on December 1, 2025, and ending on November 30, 2027. The agreement includes one renewal term of two years. The annual rent to be paid is $6,720, and no sense.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There you go.
Motion passes. Okay. Next up, approval of a resolution to approve the donation of Steam Locomotive Number 202 to Western Maryland Scenic Railroad Development Corporation.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and council to approve a resolution for the donation of Steam Locomotive Number 202 to the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad Development Corporation, WMSR, for the purpose of restoring a locomotive for scenic tours. The city shall convey the locomotive to WMSR in as-is condition. The note, the donation set forth in the attached donation agreement is contingent upon WMSR's renovation and repair of the locomotive to a condition which meets or surpasses the Federal Railroad Administration Regulations for operation as provided in 49 CFR Part 230, no later than 10 years from the effective date. If WMSR does not restore the locomotive to this condition in a timely manner, the city shall have the right to demand that the locomotive be returned to it.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. No.
Motion does not pass. Next up, approval of a resolution, approval of a parking agreement with the Maryland State Department of Assessments and Taxation.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and council to approve a resolution to enter into a parking agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the state of Maryland for the rental of 10 parking spaces in the central lot west for use by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. The term of the parking lease is two years, commencing on December 1, 2025, and ending on November 30, 2027. The agreement includes one renewal term of two years. The annual rent to be paid is $6,720, and no sense.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a resolution, approval to enter into a user agreement with the Hagerstown Fairground Softball Association, Inc.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a resolution to enter into a user agreement with Hagerstown Fairground Softball Association Incorporated for the use of softball fields at Fairground Park. The term of the user agreement is three years, beginning January 1, 2026, and concluding December 31, 2028, with two possible renewal terms of one year each. The city shall charge no monetary rent for the use of the premises, and initial $2,500 contribution shall be due at signing of the agreement for use of the electric water and sewer utilities.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just curious, do they also, how does the concession stand work?
They run the concession stand.
Okay, so they, when they go into agreement, they also are in agreement with the...
They run, yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a resolution, approval of a one-call center service agreement with One Call Concepts Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council to approve a resolution to enter into a one-call center service agreement with One Call Concepts, Inc. The agreement is to maintain a one-call service under which One Call Concepts, Inc. will receive, process, and report notices of proposed work for persons, firms, corporations, and other entities who intend to, I'm sorry, excavate, demolish, drill, blast, or otherwise disturb the service or subservice of the earth. This agreement shall become effective on the date signed and shall continue in full force in effect for five years. This agreement shall continue for another five-year term if neither party provides written notice. The city shall be charged various fees for this service as outlined in the service agreement.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. No.
Motion does not pass. Next up, approval of a resolution, approval of a parking agreement with the Maryland State Department of Assessments and Taxation.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and council to approve a resolution to enter into a parking agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the state of Maryland for the rental of 10 parking spaces in the central lot west for use by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. The term of the parking lease is two years, commencing on December 1, 2025, and ending on November 30, 2027. The agreement includes one renewal term of two years. The annual rent to be paid is $6,720, and no sense.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a resolution, approval of a one-call center service agreement with One Call Concepts Incorporated. The agreement is to maintain a one-call service under which One Call Concepts, Inc. will receive, process, and report notices of proposed work for persons, firms, corporations, and other entities who intend to, I'm sorry, excavate, demolish, drill, blast, or otherwise disturb the service or subservice of the earth. This agreement shall become effective on the date signed and shall continue in full force in effect for five years. This agreement shall continue for another five-year term if neither party provides
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Approval of a resolution, national settlement agreement with Purdue Sackler.
Mr. Mayor, I remove the mayor and council approval of a resolution authorizing approving and directing the mayor to enter into a national settlement agreement with Purdue Sackler to benefit the city in connection with litigation against contributors of the opioid addiction crisis. The mayor is further authorized to execute and deliver any additional documentation, including but not limited to the governmental entity settlement agreement released. The approvals in paragraph two through four of the resolution are expressly contingent upon the city's receipt of written confirmation from the State of Maryland that it will honor the division set forth in the initial state subdivision agreement, namely 70% of the proceeds to the subdivisions and 30% of all proceeds to the state.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of a resolution, national settlement agreement with eight defendants.
Mr. Mayor, I remove the mayor and council approval of a resolution authorizing approving and directing the mayor to enter into a national settlement agreement with eight defendants, Alvegen, Amneal, Apatex, Hicma, Indivir, Mylan, Sun Pharma, and Zittus, to benefit the city in connection with litigation against contributors of the opioid addiction crisis. The mayor is further authorized to execute and deliver any additional documentation, including but not limited to signing the participation form and submitting documents necessary to effectuate the purpose of this resolution. The approvals in paragraph two, two through four of the resolution are expressly contingent upon the city's receipt of written confirmation from the State of Maryland that it will honor the division set forth in the initial state subdivision agreement, namely 70% of all proceeds to the subdivisions and 30% of all proceeds to the state.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Councilman, you knew they were going to make you read that one, right?
Yes.
Said you knew they were going to make you read that one, right? Resolution, granting of an access easement to Columbia Gas of Maryland.
I hereby move to approve a resolution to grant access easement to Columbia Gas of Maryland across city property near 441 South Potomac Street and Alley Number 2-106.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of two irrigation meters, South Hagerstown High School Athletic Fields.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve two irrigation meters for South Hagerstown High Athletic Fields in accordance with City Code 240.69, exemption of sewer service charge, which allows for a sewer deduct whenever it is established that the entire amount of water delivered through a meter does not and cannot enter the Hagerstown Police Water Collection. The irrigation meter is further described in the attached staff memo dated August 7th, 2025.
You want a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of FY26 Employee Stipend, transition to biweekly pay cycle.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council to approve the payment of a stipend equivalent to 20 hours of each individual's base pay rate, pay upon the transition to a biweekly pay cycle. This transition is expected to happen during the first quarter of the calendar year 2026 and is a one-time payment that will not be impacted by any future hourly rate adjustments. The following conditions apply. Number one, must be a regular full-time, part-time, or seasonal employee at the time of the transition to a bi-weekly pay, pay cycle. Number two, excludes any employee that tendered a resignation prior to the transition date. Number three, all applicable, all applicable federal and state taxes will be deducted from this payment. The payment will be distributed to qualified employees on a Friday of the first week of no pay. Staff will return later in the fiscal year to provide an update of the actual cost by fund incurred. The funding source will be fund balance reserves.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of government relations engagement agreement with Compass GR Partners.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of government relation engagement agreement with Compass GR Partners. As stated in the scope of work, Compass Government Relation Partners LLC will represent the City of Hagerstown with respect to the city's legislative priorities, issues affecting municipalities generally, as well as state budget requests. The term of the agreement is August 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2026, with fees of $48,000 to be covered in a general fund legal department operating budget.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Acceptance of a grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust for tree planting.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move to accept a grant from the Chesapeake Bay Trust to fund tree planting efforts in the city. This $50,000 grant will be matched by $27,750 in local funds from the stormwater production program. It will be used to plant at least 130 trees in fiscal year 26.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval to accept the Entertainment District Security Grant.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval to accept a State of Maryland Entertainment District Security Grant, the amount of $49,110. This no-match grant will help to enhance real, real-time response capabilities and increase visible police presence in the Hagerstown Arts and Entertainment District.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Got the motions. All right, next up, we have general citizen comments. General citizens comments are welcome. I'm sorry.
The one that was pulled needs to go to new business.
I'm sorry.
The motion that was pulled out of consent agenda needs to go to new business.
Okay.
Or needs, where you can, if you want to vote on it, to reject it totally, or table it.
I move to table.
You'd have to make a motion to table.
Yeah, I make a motion to table the item.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, sorry.
No, no problem.
Y'all need to.
All right. Next up is general citizen comment. Comments are welcome and shall be limited to three minutes, and the first one signed up is Mr. Sean Porter.
Good evening. I'm Sean Porter. I live in the area. I wanted to speak about Washington County and marijuana tax revenue. The State of Maryland is supposed to dispense marijuana tax proceeds to areas most affected by arrests for marijuana. It's like a reparations for arresting people for smoking, a joint-type situation. So hundreds of thousands of dollars has been flowing to Washington County that was supposed to go to the most affected zip code, which is 21740. Does anyone in this room know where 21740 is? It's Hagerstown. Washington County kept this money, more than $600,000 at this point. They've been keeping this money. They've been depriving it from Hagerstown. They've kept it in their budget. They've said that they were going to turn it over, they haven't done it. Basically, Michelle Gordon's the county administrator. She is nothing more than a snake. I believe she used to work for the City of Hagerstown, and she has a grudge. She left the City of Hagerstown under allegations of theft. I don't know if it was theft from the city. I don't know if it was theft from another employee. I don't really care. She then went to Jefferson County, West Virginia, where, guess what? She faced allegations of theft of public funds, misuse of public funds. She actually sued a citizen for commenting on Facebook about how she was some sort of a thief. I don't know all the details, but she got booted out of there, and she came over to Washington County, where apparently she runs $400 million a year worth of a budget. That's what Washington County's budget is, like 135 million. And the money that came in from the State of Maryland that was supposed to be redistributed for the sale of marijuana in this area, didn't make it to the City of Hagerstown of people most affected. Instead, it's going to Black Rock Golf Course. So I don't know if you know this, but Washington County owns its own golf course. So the next time you see money coming out of your check, or you're paying for an increase in property taxes, just remember you're subsidizing Black Rock Golf Course and some lawyer's golf game. So I know, you know, everyone loves subsidizing the lawyer's golf game, no offense. But that's basically what's going on here. Now, I realize that you guys had to raise your property taxes to compensate for budget shortfalls, and you needed more money, so you raised property taxes here in Hagerstown. Well, based on my research and my ninth-grade education, which takes me far, far into mathematics, I have calculated that if they had just turned over the marijuana money, you wouldn't have had to raise property taxes in the City of Hagerstown. So this election cycle, vote out the current commissioners, so that you don't have your property taxes raised in the future, and make sure you demand your, your revenue from the marijuana sales so that we don't have to keep suffering with property tax increases because of the commissioners. So everyone that's been blaming the, the council and the mayor for their property taxes going up, they should be blaming the commissioners, because if they had simply turned over the revenue that was intended for the city, the city could have used it for police and other purposes, as needed and as required, without necessitating the increase of property taxes. So just say no to higher property taxes in Hagerstown and vote out the Board of County Commissioners. Not that I'm biased at all against them.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Thank you.
Next up, Alva Moses, AKA Mr. Hagerstown.
Name's Alva Moses, and I want to speak about, I sent an email to the mayor and council over the last weekend. I've had one email from one of the council members, so I thank you, and I appreciate that. And this is what I wrote for today. On August 8th, 2025, Hagerstown began enforcing a six-month ordinance banning sleeping or camping in public spaces, with fines up to 500 or 60 days in jail, but official stress voluntary compliance over punishment. Along this, community programs like Washington Goods Purple raise awareness about substance use and mental health. Prevention efforts like Save Locomotive 202 show the city values both people and its history. While supporters highlight safety and sanitation, critics warn it may target those experience, experiencing homelessness without addressing blue causes like housing or mental health. Thank you for letting me share.
Thanks, Alva.
Thanks, Alva.
Uh, next up, Steve Jones. Bill Jones back there.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Steve Jones. I live in halfway. Since March, I've been picking up trash in Hagerstown almost every day, during the week most of the time, and I'm going to be planning more weekend cleanups because more people are available on the weekends. This work is not just a community service, but it's essential. I've cleaned both private and city-owned properties. I'm not from Hagerstown, but I take pride in wherever I call home, and right now, this is where I call home. I'm always looking for volunteers to help out. The group is Cleaning Up Hagerstown on Facebook. My email is keepitcleanhagerstown@gmail.com. I'm only a small part of the solution, and I'm doing my best to my ability. Let's see, I've also been starting some homeless outreach. I just turned 40 in July. My nonprofit, Keep It Clean MD, was approved by the state. I want to thank True North for helping me through that process. Uh, yeah, let's see, um. I also believe 202 should stay in Hagerstown. This is Hub City after all, and there's a mural straight across the street from City Hall that has a Steam Locomotive on it. And I'll have a meet and greet September 10th at Hub City Brewery from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Wednesday evening. I'd also like to thank the mayor for staying in communication with me as I've been doing this work. That's all. Thank you.
Hey, Steve. You want that date again for your meet and greet?
Uh, the date is September 10th at Hub City Brewery.
Okay.
Four to seven.
All right, appreciate it. Next up, Curtis Ray.
Good afternoon, guys. My name is Curtis Ray. I'm going to come up here and just speak really fast. I do want to voice my support for the locomotive. I will admit, I don't really have too much invested in the train itself, but I can appreciate how one man and one woman have actually been able to spur such a movement in our city to actually cause all these people to come together and actually voice their support in keeping this train. I think we should actually try and give them a chance to see what they can do with their nonprofit and how they can actually bring this train back to life, would be the term I'd use. And because of that, I think it'd be worth trying to have. I really do. But other than that, I'll let you all go. Thank you for having me. Keep us safe.
Hey, that's all that signed up for general citizen comments. If anybody else would like to speak, we have three minutes. Now, it's not, we're not on an agenda item, but general citizen comments, go ahead. State your name.
So Rich Roach, Hagerstown, Maryland. I just want to thank the six people that I'm looking at for, it's been a rough year, and we made it through as a community. Rough road, bumps along the way, but at the end of the day, six people that I'm looking at, made the right choice, and however they came to that choice, you know, I'm personally appreciative. I think there's a room full of railroad folks, railroad historians, and lovers of children that are appreciative. I hope we can move forward from this point. And again, just thank each and every one of you for listening, whether it was through email, whether it was through personal conversation. I, I think it goes a lot, it says a lot about the mayor and council that I'm looking at right now, that they do hear the people. You just have to figure out, you know, what's the best way to communicate with them. But thank you, thank you very much, and we hope that we can move forward with you all for the best interest of the children of Hagerstown and Locomotive 202.
Thank you, Rich. Anyone else? Just state your name.
Hello, my name is Jacob Ansel. Wanted to speak on this encampment ordinance, too. So I lived in Hagerstown all my life, actually just moved just outside town in Siroposs. Still have a Hagerstown address. So I'll keep it short and sweet instead of sounding like public speaking. I think this ordinance to hassle the homeless is ridiculous on its face and cruel when it really comes down to brass tacks. I think it's repugnant to penalize a homeless person for the crime of being homeless. Having housing plans and long-term goals, I think that's fine and dandy, I love it, but I think it means jack if we're still penalizing the people that these plans are meant to help. If we really cared about solving the homeless issue in this town, we'd be, we wouldn't be policing one of the most marginalized groups in America. I believe that the solution to homelessness is fighting poverty, fighting for higher-density urban housing, and fighting for more resources for those out in the streets. As it stands now, the approach of policing, it seems like it's to get the problem out of sight, out of mind. Kick the rock down the road, get him some other town, get him some other county, and just shuffle him around, get him so out of sight, like I said. Uh, so yeah, I think we should be helping these people, not hassling the homeless, like I said. Uh, thank you, like I said, I'll keep it short.
All right. State your name, please.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Thomas. I was born and raised in Hagerstown. I'm here to express my strong opposition to the recent anti-encampment ordinance. It really effectively criminalizes members of our unhoused community. We did start a petition for this. I don't know if any of you have seen it online yet, but we do have three asks that I wanted you to consider. I also wrote it in, if you need to look at it later. We would like a new resource liaison appointed, because the one that the Hagerstown Police Department appointed is, you cannot contact her, we have all tried. There is no way to contact her. So that leaves anybody unhoused that is looking for resources unable to get them. We would also like any fines that are collected from unhoused individuals to be turned around and used towards housing measures for them in the future. And we would also like a 24/7 accessible crisis center that is walkable, able for them to access. that is walkable, able for them to access. The one at Meredith's right now is not 24/7 and is also not downtown. And they also don't have nurses on staff while they're open. They just have providers and assistant personnel. So those are our three asks that we have. We do have a petition started that I would like for you guys to take a look at if you get some time. You can see it online. Our community really deserves compassionate and practical solutions, not criminalization. So I hope you take this seriously.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Ethan Lowen. In regards to the homeless ordinance, you know, the issues with the homeless ordinance is a very tragic situation, a very sad situation. But it's a situation where we have proven known solutions. Like, there's no guessing, zero guesswork, actually, right? So because what it is, is when you look at the homeless, there's basically, there's two primary groups involved with the homeless. Okay, there's those that are addicts, and there are those that are homeless for other reasons, economic reasons, et cetera. Now, what ends up happening is that we've been dealing with this issue in America since the 80s. So we know exactly what causes it because we've seen community after community after community make the same mistakes. And we've even seen a few communities fix it. And so we know exactly what the communities did that caused, allowed the situation to grow. They all did the same thing. And we know what the, those few communities that brought themselves back. We know what they did. They all did the same thing. So the first thing to understand is that with the homeless community, about 68% of homeless are addicts. Okay. The 24%, 25% roughly are for other reasons. So there's like 11% unaccounted for. So just go with the ones that are accounted for. We know that with the 300% increase in the drug trade in America over the last 12 years, 300%, it's led to us to an 80% increase in the chronic homeless, which is what we're talking about. And so what ends up happening is we have to admit that it is a result of the drug trade. Okay. So what ends up, and this is going back to the 80s, is just those communities, most of them just allowed it to continue. The suffering is worse, the homeless is worse, the murders are worse, everything is worse. And you can even look just at our local area to see how to fix it. So if you go to the Panhandle of West Virginia, where in the timeframe that over the last several years, our homeless population went up and everyone's like, oh my gosh, the crime, the crime, the homelessness, the crime, the drugs, right, all three, same issue. What was happening is that the Panhandle's homeless population is dropping by 2/3, 2/3. So what did they do in the same timeframe? What they did is, one, they had centers to help the homeless move out of the commercial centers for the tax base. They had police, they brought a new police commissioner in who said, no, we're not going to let these crimes happen. We are going to arrest criminals. And then they basically started fining landlords that allowed drug dens, that allowed their areas to be used. As a result, 2/3 plummeted. Now, what that means, though, is that the number of homeless that are there is so small that they can all be given the resources that they need, and they do. If you look at what the Panhandle of West Virginia does, it's amazing what they do for their needy. But it's only because they have reduced, as a result of reducing the drug trade, they have reduced the number of homeless to a manageable number. We need to do the same thing. We can't manage this level of dysfunction in society. Unfortunately, it's just a matter of math. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. So I'm speaking in opposition to the ordinance that fines or jails people for the crime of not having a home. It's really inhumane to make someone have to pay upwards of $500 or spend up to 60 nights in jail for each night that they don't have a roof over their head. This ordinance chooses to address homelessness by criminalizing it. And research shows that this cruel practice is ineffective at solving anything. And in fact, it causes more problems. Funneling people into the criminal justice system only drives up costs due to repeated arrests, court proceedings, and the increased expenses of operating jails. And then on top of that, a history of incarceration makes it harder for individuals to secure jobs, housing, or stability, trapping them in the cycle of poverty. This is especially concerning in Hagerstown, where many formerly incarcerated individuals from the Maryland Correctional Institute often remain here due to its close proximity. It is especially unacceptable, it is exceptionally unacceptable, given that approximately one out of four of Hagerstown's unhoused population are veterans. So whereas you're forgetting not on them, these are people who served our country and are now struggling in a way you could never understand. Responding to their plight with jail time instead of housing is a betrayal of their service and a stain on the city of Hagerstown. Instead, Hagerstown needs to invest in expanding affordable housing and wraparound services that address the needs of the areas of mental health, life skills, and job assistance. Using a housing-first strategy, which is providing stable, permanent housing without means testing or conditional requirements, has been proven to be the most effective way to reduce chronic homelessness. Cities across the United States and the world have dramatically increased the number of unhoused individuals while saving public funds using this model. When housing is seen as an investment instead of a human right, profit ends up being more important than people. You're punishing the victims of capitalism and its failure to protect the rights of every human being. Do you value human lives and the dignity of every member of our community enough to choose solutions that actually help people? Would you rather see your city spend taxpayer dollars cycling people through jails or investing in housing that saves money on lives? Do you want Hagerstown remembered as a city that punished homelessness, homelessness, or a city that solved it? Council members, you have a choice to right this wrong. Thank you for accepting my public comment.
All right, anyone else? Okay, that's it. City administrator.
Mayor's city offices will be closed on Monday in recognition of Labor Day and mine and Senator Paul Cornman's birthday. So.
And mine.
But he's much older than I am. Jim, trash delayed today or no change in trash? Delayed today. So if you're Monday night, you'll be Tuesday night this week and it'll just go on down the way. That's it for me.
Before I go, council, also to add to the general comments, we had a couple emails. I just want to make it known. Robert Bernardo emailed to city council comments regarding water and sewer rate increases. And Laura Nowen, Skaty Cook, Carola Saunders, and Charlotte Thomas emailed Mayor and Council regarding outdoors lodging ordinance. I just wanted to say that real quick. Councilman Flaherty.
You know, I just want to say, Locomotive 202, thank you guys for your energy, enthusiasm. And you guys have certainly made an impact in our city. And it's well-known from all the emails we get and everything else. And I'm excited to see what you guys can do with that. And Mr. Jones, thank you so much for, you know, what you do with our city, for the cleanup effort and things like that. I've seen that on Facebook and everything like that. And, you know, I really definitely appreciate that. And, you know, I definitely think, you know, maybe getting some of our cannabis tax money from the county would be a good thing to pursue since I don't think people should be locked up for jail for cannabis for 20 years or something ridiculous like that. So I think that's something to pursue. But that's all I got.
Councilwoman Bell.
Yes, Mr. Porter, I had raised that concern at the beginning of our administration and even worked with our city administrator to get some emails to them. The last thing we heard, they had wanted to have a private meeting, I believe. So that was the last thing we heard about it, but I'm still going to keep pushing for that. So thank you for bringing that up. I do want to just talk briefly about Councilmember Burnett's rent cap. So what I was thinking is, if we can't cap it, another thing we could do was propose implementing a policy that prohibits rent increase during the first 12 months of Tennessee. Additionally, landlords should prove a minimum of 100, should provide a minimum of 120 days' notice before any rent increase, regardless of the amount. This ensures transparency and allows tenants to plan accordingly. Also, rent properties should be registered annually and undergo periodic safety inspections. This is not only, this only ensures tenant safety, but also hold landlords accountable as well. I was also thinking if we could maybe implement something to where if they are paying max rent, that then that's where we push them to homeownership. And that will kind of also do with our initiative to push more homeownership as well. Implementing these measures, we can create a balanced approach that protects tenants and encourages responsible landlord practices as well. So that's all I got.
Councilwoman Burnett.
Last week, Mayor Delegate Matt Schindler, the city administrator Scott Nice Warner and I hosted a discussion on key community issues facing Hagerstown and Washington County and how we can work together to address them for the benefit of our residents. Representatives from the county, the state delegation, and a lot of community partners participated in this conversation last week. Topics included homelessness, truancy and youth curfew, youth violence, drug addiction, and services. This was an initial organizational discussion to determine how best to move forward. Our goal is to develop a comprehensive report outlining a five-year plan with clear milestones and deadlines, which should be shared with both city and county residents. The city is already doing our part with offering solutions. And I look forward to continuing these open and collaborative discussions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Ms. Porter, I commend you for your transparency and your continued advocacy for the city of Hagerstown because nobody does it like you. That's all in a positive way. Mr. Alva Moses, continue to, continue to uplift our city. I'm sorry. Your energy matters. And I'm truly sorry for not responding to your email, to your email. So I'm doing it now in person. And I just want to let you know, you never go unnoticed. Whether it's your gestures through the city by providing gifts, you're very poetic, you're very artistic. There's so much more to you. So you truly are special. That's all I wanted to say. To Mr. Keeping It Clean, keep it clean. And thank you for helping keep, keep Hagerstown clean. You truly do inspire our whole community. I wanted to let you know that. Who else came up to speak that I had something to say for? I'm sorry, guys. For the overall crowd that came out and spoke for Locomotive 202, I just want to say preserving this train is really preserving our story and our history and our landmark. And to be quite frank with you guys, I just visited New York City about, just over the weekend. And just visiting like the Interped and the Growler, that was something that was gifted to the city of New York, and they have preserved it very well. I probably took a four-hour tour in the submarine as well as the Interped, and there was so much for me to learn. I was very glad that my children got to experience, got to experience it as well, and many more generations will continue to experience those as well. And that's all I have to say for tonight.
Councilwoman Al Shar.
I'll address two of the items this evening. The first is, I'm going to address the comments related to the outdoors lodging or sleeping ordinance. And I feel a bit like a broken record on this, so I'll address two items or address it in two parts. The first is this. I did hear the comments this evening about how the city needs to do so much more to address this issue. One of those items being that we need to provide more affordable housing. I want to give you this stat. There are about 150,000 people in this county, right? Out of the roughly 20,000 housing units in the city of Hagerstown, in the corporate limits of the city, 60% of those are rental. And of those 60% that are rental, somewhere between 5,000 and 7,000 are provided or exist in some form of subsidy. That's roughly one in five houses in this city that are some form of affordable housing. One in five. You can't talk. In, in the county, as a total, it's 3%, 3%, about 1 in 50. So when we talk about those numbers, I don't see anybody going to the county commissioners and speaking to the issue of what those types of needs are countywide. I always hear about what the city needs to do to address these countywide needs. And I think that Mr. Porter spoke to that a bit this evening. The second point to that part, no one's asking what's happening with the county's receipt of the opioid restitution money or the weed tax that they're getting that's being spent outside of the city on these things that folks keep telling us are a city issue to address. So at some point, folks got to broaden the folks that they're speaking to and reach beyond the limits of this room. To the effect of the ordinance specifically, I will say again, I could take or leave this ordinance, and here's why. This ordinance only applies to city property, and the city owns four types of property. The city owns property that its public utilities exist on. Those are sensitive locations we don't allow people in. They're already a no trespassing area. So clearly, folks can't live on those properties. They can't reside on those properties because no individual is permitted to be on those properties in any length of time. Number two, number two, the city owns public parking lots. Those are regulated by the city and no individual, doesn't matter whether you're housed or not, can exist long-term. You can't leave your car for months at a time on cities' public parking lots. Those rules apply to everybody equally. The third is city owns public parks. You can't be in the parks after dark. Those are rules that apply to all individuals equally. And the fourth type of property that the city owns are public ways. You cannot block the sidewalk, you cannot block the street indefinitely. Those rules apply to people equally. And we have ordinances in this city that have existed for decades that apply to all four of those types of property that the city owns, that this ordinance we've adopted simply redundantly speaks to. It changes nothing. Those regulations exist, the enforcements exist, the fines exist. They've existed forever. They simply exist differently in your minds now because we've written a different ordinance to say it a different way. That's it. That's it. On the issue of the train, clearly, I voted to second the motion this evening. But when you second a motion, you're not allowed to speak against the motion that you seconded. So I simply voted when the time came to vote, and I voted against providing it to another party. And I'm just going to be real plain with these two statements on why. I spent a good bit of time the last week sort of reading through the documentation of how the city came to accept this piece of property. And I can't clearly find that the city definitively accepted this piece of property in terms of being a root owner. I know Mr. Scali spoke to this a little bit this evening, but if you read the historic documentation, it's sort of like we're the caretakers of a piece of property rather than the root owner. We simply happen to be the property in which that piece of property rests on. And if you also read the language, it says very clearly, when the mayor of this city accepted it at the time, he accepted it on behalf of the city as caretakers, and it's our obligation to caretake or care for that property over the permanent period in which it is supposed to exist here. My opinion, I think it's probably still owned by the railroad, and we probably have to return it back to that entity that provided to the city, simply because we're the caretakers of it. They simply moved it from their property over to ours and said, hey, you guys take care of this. And we said, sure, we'll take care of it in this manner. So I don't know that we have the clear and definitive capability of, I guess, dissolving our interest of ownership in this piece of property. And I've yet to find documentation to that effect. Even insofar as when we researched the documentation, nobody was around 20 years ago when we sold it the first time. And there's no real document I could find that says how we technically accepted that ownership back. I think at that time, nobody really cared that much because the person we sort of sold it to was going to care for it right there. And so it simply met the tenants of that process. On the part of the group effort of 202, I will say this. If the interest of this body is to entertain retaining this long-term, caring for it long-term, as it appears, our charge is as it appears our charge is written to be, we cannot have the relationship that we have had, at least with some of the members that have purported to be speaking on behalf of the 202 group in the months that we've had these deliberations, because they are not good and positive things to start that relationship between this body and the folks that have interest. And certainly, they are not good for our city staff to receive because there's not a lot of positive that came out of that process when we're simply trying to make the best decisions we can up at this table that we feel are in the best interest of the citizens we represent. So if we are going to continue that relationship, it needs to become much more positive in the public way in which we communicate with one another as we proceed forward.
You good? I want to, I want to jump on what Councilwoman Burnett said. We, it's not really public knowledge, but last week, we did have a stakeholders meeting with federal representatives, state and county and local. We all came together to tackle these issues that everybody's talking about. And we're going to continue these meetings. You know, it was a consensus around the table that we're going to do this once a month, and we're going to continue to work on these issues. So one thing I do take exception to is that the city's not doing anything. Actually, the city organized this meeting, and we're working diligently to solve these issues. Chief Cuyfer, if you could indulge me just for, real quick, up here at the podium.
Well, I'd like to explain, well, before you say anything about the ordinance, I would like to say something. In this ordinance, nowhere does it criminalize its homelessness. It makes it illegal to sleep on public property, correct? Okay, if you could elaborate a little bit more, so, I mean, just real, as quick as you can, and let everybody know what this entails.
Again, nowhere in the ordinance does it mention homelessness at all. I know it could affect some of the people that are homeless, but not everyone that we come across in these situations are homeless. They are, for the lack of better description, people that vacation on the street. They have a place to be, they have a place to live. They choose to be out on the street, they choose to indulge in their addictions or the issues that they have, and then they wind up falling asleep on the street.
What percentage do you think that is?
Very, very small. In terms of the percentage of people that are in that category?
Yes.
I don't know, probably 40 or 50%.
Okay.
Since we've enacted the ordinance, no one has been charged with this. We've got data we've been collecting, which we're going to present to the city administrator next week, which will be every month as I promised. So next week will be the one month of the ordinance being enacted. And so we're capturing a lot of significant data, data that Councilwoman Burnett was asking about, along with additional data. And I think you'll be pleased at the data we're collecting. I think the community will be pleased with the data we're collecting and to show what that picture looks like. But no one has been charged. There's been no one cited for this. And exactly what we said it would be, it's a rare occasion that we may have to enforce this ordinance for situations where all the other ordinances that the Councilman Alashar had mentioned kind of have gaps or holes in for certain circumstances. And so that's what we've done this for, to try to help fill these gaps. But it's not going to fix the problem, as I've said before. This doesn't fix the problem. It's, it's something that, that works on a specific incident where we have to do something when we're called upon to do something. And we didn't have anything, any way to enforce those things or to solve the problem in that community for people that were complaining in those, in those times. So I sympathize with all the people that come up here and that are advocating for what, what they're advocating for, that were trying to criminalize homelessness. I do, I sympathize with that. We work very hard with the Homeless Coalition. We attend those meetings, we've been on those, I've been attending those meetings for 15 years. And the Homeless Coalition people, the members of the Homeless Coalition that work with the community that we're talking about, the homeless people, they were told about this ordinance. I approached them before I approached you guys about this ordinance, explained to them what our goals were and what we wanted to do, and I got their support. And I wouldn't have done that, it would have been harder to come here and do that without their support. So that's, they see the same thing, and they have issues that they're dealing with, with the change in the population of that, what they're seeing. So we're trying to, we're trying to do two things here. And one thing doesn't negate the other, so we still have to have a little bit of accountability in certain circumstances, and that's what we're trying to do.
Have you had any incidents at all? I know you said you haven't, I mean, have you had any, and it's not arrests?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've been out with people that would fit the bill either on public or private property, and we're catching that, we're capturing that data together collectively. And we're asking some very specific questions and trying to get a better picture of what that looks like. And so we're capturing that data. And again, next, your next council meeting in two weeks, you're going to have data that the city administrator can provide to you as an update for the first 30 days of what this ordinance is.
But instead of fining them $500 and arresting them, you're doing exactly what, what this is designed to do.
They've been asked to move along, they voluntarily moved along, and we've been offering resources like we've always done.
Okay. And also, in our stakeholders meeting, the leader, Reach, said how good she thought this ordinance was because people are actually reaching out to her now for where resources. And that's our largest homeless center in, in the city, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to, I just want to make those points known, and I appreciate you coming up and indulging me.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And one last thing, I had the pleasure of swearing in 10 new police recruits today. I'd be a little worried if I was, man, some of them look like babies, but it was glad, I was glad to see that amount. That was the, I think, Chief, didn't you say that was the biggest recruiting class we've had so far in the city of Hagerstown? Yeah, that was great to see, and I was glad to be a part of that. So you should be proud. Okay, do I get a motion to adjourn? By a second.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, before I do that, I missed something. Okay, we have three read requests for letters of support. First one's a request from, and everyone, everybody on council has all these. I'm just looking for your approval. The first one's a request from Chris Silverling on behalf of B.C. Property Services for a historic tax credit through the Maryland Historical Trust for property located at 2 through 14 North Potomac Street of Hagerstown. Good? The second one's a request from Chris Silverling and Zane Aldum with RAS Development applying for the Maryland Historic or Revitalization, excuse me, revitalization tax credit program for property located at 920 West Washington Street, Hagerstown.
I'm with this one.
You ready? And the last one's a request from Joe Jefferson with the Antietam Velo Club to the Maryland Sports Commission to hold the 2026 Mid-Atlantic Regional Cycling Championships.
Yes.
Okay. Now, do I get a motion to adjourn? In a second. Any discussion on any items we talked about this evening? Okay. Hold on a favor. We are now adjourned.